Paldol, Attorney General, Town and Pressut Valley Study Session, April 4th, 2024. Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Leva.
Here.
Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Heberly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Palguda.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. First up, item 2A, Economic Development Strategic Plan. Mr. Chamberlain, I believe you're leading us off.
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. We are here today to kind of give you a brief look at kind of what we have been doing, tasked with for like the last six, seven months, and really kind of where our status is and what we're doing with this plan, and to get your feedback and direction and kind of make sure we're all rowing in the same direction. So with me today, I have Jim Rounds from Rounds Consulting Group and Andy Tobin from Tobin Business Solutions. So I was going to have Mr. Tobin come up first and talk about his outreach to the community and a couple other key factors that he's been researching for us. So, Mr. Tobin?
Welcome, Mr. Tobin. I believe you don't need any introduction at all.
Thank you for that, Mayor, and I already understand the time constraints and the Mayor Palguda program here. Get to the point, do it fast, so I'm going to gavel out. So I'll try to maintain my reputation. So Mayor and City Council members, executive staff, listen, it has been a real joy for me to be able to have spent some time to help put this economic development package together. You know, I lived here, and so I've seen the Prescott Valley from longer ago. Oh, okay. Cutter's going to click on me. That won't turn me off, will it? Okay. So I live right by where the parade used to go through and started raising my kids here and whatnot, and remember the antelope that came trampling through probably right where you're sitting, Councilwoman, right? And it was, so this is a remarkable and especially remarkable place. What you're looking at is some of the questions that the executive staff and I and Mr. Rounds came up with just to get some overview, some brief from the community. We circulated that to some of the chamber members, a lot of the chamber members, and others. What about the Industrial Commission up here? What are they called? The regular, whatever, one of those. It'll come to me. I'm 65, I'm on Medicare now, so please bear with me. I'm learning. But to that point, I think we got a wide spread of interest and commentary, which we've included in this report. But more than that, I think what was really the best part of my job was that I got to sit down with a lot of people. So I got to sit down with a lot of you, leadership here. We had some long conversations. I know, for us councilmen, I know you kept saying, "I know this is long, but I want to get this out." Well, it wasn't too long for me. I enjoyed our time together. And what I learned about this group is it's quite the team, actually. There really, we really weren't breaking very far from one another about where we were going and what we were looking into. And some of the things that kept coming back to me were similar to what we were hearing from the business community. And you folks sent me to places to go, "Oh, you ought to go see what they're doing for affordable housing. Remember, I went over there? I got tours all over. You know, it's pure Prescott Valley, right? There, you know, you walk in and these folks are like, "Hey, let me show you what I do. Let me show you how, you know, how many of these I'm building. We're making this for Boeing. We're doing this for, you know, for our new marketing or manufacturing groups down in Peoria." I'm like, wow. So that was a fascinating part. But then I also got to meet some of your executives in the community, from the community college to your school superintendents and her staff. And, you know, it's kind of like a football squad. And, you know, I've been around long enough to know, and probably there's not a town in Arizona that I haven't been in and participated in some way. In fact, it's where Manager Davidson and I had first met in his days down in Morana. So I share with you, this is, continues to be the place that I thought it was when I first came here. Because at the end of the day, what it all turned out to be was it was about our citizenry. Your citizens love this place. And what I learned most was it's reflective in the elected staff that's here. You all are excited about this place. You're all, "Gosh, we came here and look what this was, right? We saw all these things, we want this to get better." I can't have imagined a more enthusiastic group that's really coming together to create what I consider Phase Two of Prescott Valley. You know, here we are, we got infrastructure, right? I haven't, how long have we been watching this grow? You know, and you have all this infrastructure now. And now you got this big, huge piece of land out there. Who would have thought these things were heading our way to this little lonesome valley? You know, and here we are. And there's great optimism, and your citizenry are very optimistic. And what I learned about government in being an elected and then being in the administration side is that you need to all be working together on this stuff. And what I found is that is real, what's going on here. This relationship with your staff and with the elected leaderships from the citizens is real. And that's important. That means real facts come out. You're not afraid to listen to alternate facts, you're not afraid to hear from a little criticism along the way. But at the end of the day, you're still trying to hold fast to this vision of what are we going to be down the road? What does this mean to us? And so, you know, I've known Mr. Rounds for many, many years. During our very difficult times in state government, we found it was important to do the same thing, get the electeds together with the administration so we can develop a plan of how do we get out of this mess? You folks aren't in a mess. You folks are ready to take off on this next incredible journey, and you'll be the front part of it, which is really exciting when you think about it. There's some things I'd like to leave you with, and I know Mr. Rounds is going to walk you through some of this data, which is also very exciting. You're going to see a pathway that if you stay the same, what that does, right, Jim? You're going to see the pathway, well, if we make some of these changes, this is where you'll probably see us somewhere in the middle. So you're going to get some options of things that you can literally react to in your economic planning going further. So what I'm here to encourage you to do is stay competitive. I will just share this with you. That is, I think, the most critical part where it's going to save you the most time and effort. Stay competitive. We have to be in a place where not just the administration now and our electeds get to put this whole deal together. We have to go out now and get the partners, right? Many of us were just with the event with former Governor Ducey down here. That hall was filled with what he considered his partners when he was governor, kind of like what the mayor's looking at with all his partners in front of him. Where do we lead this football team? Where do we all, where we all hidden in the same direction? And what path? Because everybody has a mission, and everybody wants to be a part of the success. So somewhere in the middle of that, we have to be prepared to make sure that we're all on the same page or working towards the same goals. And that means everybody's included. Everybody's included. Where your lines will get all crossed up and mixed up. So, but at the end of the day, there's a lot of real success that I think you can, and you'll see it in this report. And I want to, so stay competitive, solve. Remember when we were at the Governor's Office, Gilbert, and we always talked about what's the next step? Well, we made sure we were moving in a direction that every day we look to make ourselves better. We're from the manufacturing sector, so we're always looking at continuous improvement. So when I say that, solve, you know, I'm sincere. Every day, it's our goal to solve. So it's just not enough just to dream about where we're going and to see it on a roadmap, but to commit to solve. What's the end game? Then I would encourage you to see and continue what you have been doing for all this time, which was leading. And I wanted to finish up on this with this group because this Phase Two of Prescott Valley that I'm speaking of, it clearly is a different Prescott Valley, but it's not just us that know it. I mean, the whole state knows it. The county knows it. We're not the little town next to Prescott anymore, right? We're not, we're not. We're not the second destination point for folks coming up to the valley anymore. They come through here, they see here, they see what's going on, and we have a lot of opportunity there to catch a lot of that business, to see a lot of that, those people move here. And one of the issues we're trying to solve for, and almost every one of you said this to me in a word, was to grow families here that can stay here. Remember? We want our families to be able to move here, afford to be here, work here, and keep their children here. And I think that is such a huge sign of success. You can't find it in a chart, but I can tell you with the direction that this is going with your options are, you will achieve that. And I think when any town council or any elected member gets to walk away knowing that they were able to accomplish those pieces of that puzzle, you're going to walk away feeling very successful in the time you spent here in public service. And so I do want to thank you for your public service. I want to make sure I stay on the Cal-Palguda timeline. And thank you for giving me a chance to continue to do this. I had a blast, and still more commentary are coming in. But at the end of the day, I think you're going to find hundreds of comments that we consolidated into some real thoughtful contributions to this effort. And by and large, I think that this group is certainly seated in the right place to move forward. So anyway, so thank you, Mayor, for giving me a chance to open up for Jim. Happy to answer any questions before Jim comes up.
Mr. Tobin, I just want to thank you for your efforts and your enthusiasm and your due diligence when it came to just truly just wanting to find a right path for Prescott Valley.
Yeah. I had no idea the report was going to be this big. So I immediately, but it's very valuable, and I think, and I have to put a plug in there for Jim to help make sure I stayed on those right path and concentrate on what was important to you and the community. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
For that chance. Sure appreciate it.
Good. Welcome, sir.
Mayor, Council. Let me start off by saying, we've done a lot of different strategic analyses. We typically don't produce your traditional strategic plans where within the second page, you have a SWOT analysis, and it's the same thing that you read for the community down the street, and you wonder if anything was put together for you. When we talked with staff when we originally set up the scope, we said, well, we can put in the traditional items, but I think it'd be good if we try to make more of a to-do list. Let's see if we can identify some specific items. So took a look at a lot of other strategic plans that were held in high regard, and one for a very large city in Arizona. It was about 30 pages long, and it had items that you would normally expect. It's let's increase incomes in the city. How do you do that? Let's market better. Let's form partnerships. Well, how do you do that? Well, that's where the report ended. Those types of reports aren't as useful. I like to call them to-do lists because you first have to figure out what the community wants, you have to figure out what the culture is within a community, and you don't necessarily want to change anything, you want to try to enhance what's here. And it's the same thing with economic development. You end up with, you have a lot of businesses in certain industries. And the very first thing that you try to do is can you expand on those current industries? Because that's the easiest. If you already have an industry in your area, obviously you have certain inputs that match. But how can we enhance that a little bit? So let's say, how can we take the current manufacturing base and go to a higher wage manufacturing base? How can we make a more robust healthcare system so that we have maybe more remote access than we've seen in some other cities across the state? And so we try to get very innovative with these ideas. And I'll be quick in going through it, but so for the employment, this is just an example of the process. You have to take a look at the industries that currently exist. Current employment, you look at where the volume is, you document it, but that doesn't necessarily mean this is where you're going to recommend going forward. You have to identify what is the strength now, but what could the strength be? And if I only could put one slide in here, it would just be a curve that goes up. And the reason I say that is that I think you're at that point, that inflection point, where you're going to start to see new opportunities for growth at a higher rate. And I do a lot of interviews about economic activity in different parts of the state, and I often say if I was going to be in one state during the next downturn, the next expansion, it'd be Arizona. I'm often asked, "Well, where in Arizona?" I bring up Prescott Valley a lot. In fact, I probably, between North Phoenix and our friends in Peoria and Prescott Valley, those are probably the two that I recommend people consider. Now, there's additional things that have to be done, but the foundation is real. So none of this enthusiasm is manufactured. This enthusiasm is based on a fun opportunity. So when a Monday came around and I had to start tabulating some of Andy's notes and do some additional research, it wasn't one of those, "Ah, it's Monday, the weekend's over, it's, oh, there's a lot of good information in there." So we started with the employment base. Workforce obviously is going to be a critical issue, and we have a lot of information and a lot of recommendations related to workforce advancement. But, and here's an example. So the established and emerging industries. Manufacturing is an established industry, manufacturing is an emerging industry. Sometimes it's the same general industry, but it's the occupations within that industry that matter. So there's a lot of occupational detail in the full report, too, because if somebody says manufacturing, that really doesn't mean a whole lot. It's like, well, what are you making? But when we broke some of the information down that you'll see into different occupations, and then we take a look at projections, we take a look at what the educational needs are now, what they're going to be later, you can figure out those specific areas where you want to invest. And that's a critical point, and that's what I'll be ending with in a couple of minutes. Higher wage opportunities, and so you have your established clusters, emerging clusters, those are just, you know, typical economic development jargon. It's really what are the industries and what are the occupations that are going to matter the most going forward? So when you take a look at what the current industry mix is, and that's where the reports usually stop, we go in and identify dozens and dozens and dozens of different occupations within those, and then try to figure out what makes the most sense. If you don't go to that occupational level of detail, it's hard to get a feel for if you're making recommendations that are filling some voids. No one can just say in retail, let's say it was retail, "Well, you're doing well or you're doing poorly." I'm sure it depends on where. Some communities are doing well in some cases, but they don't have enough eating establishments for residents, and so you end up, they end up leaving the area and another community's collecting the sales tax collections. So when you break it down to that level of detail, it helps, and that's what we did, and you'll see it when you see the more full report. Just as one example, we identified three case study examples of some higher wage industries. One was information and technology. But it's how you get there. And so there'll be information on, again, educational requirements, occupational information. But the thing that I liked the most is that we were encouraged, like I said with staff, to come up with some specific recommendations. And so we worked out, one of the ideas that we worked out with staff is we're very familiar, we helped with the Amcor location in Peoria. In talking with my friends in Peoria, where we do a lot of work, we were talking about whether or not, because they're on that northern part, they're at the midpoint for me to get here, basically. And Andy used the term just at lunch today, like a local sister city type of a situation. I love that concept. You always hear about sister cities in other countries, and hardly anybody goes and visits those. But it would be great because Peoria and Amcor, in some very early discussions, expressed some interest, and staff following up, to maybe establish a relationship where some local educated individuals can live here, and we figure out a way to make it where they can go into the Peoria area, maybe a couple of days a week. We might have to figure out a way of subsidizing some dorm-type housing so they can stay the night if they choose to. But again, it doesn't take that long to get there. But if we can get that relationship going, even if it's a small pilot program, that opens up the door for the next supplier to be located here. And even though it's a supplier for a big manufacturing company, I've done enough analyses to see that the suppliers often pay as much or more than the base sector businesses because the suppliers sometimes have to specialize in high tech. Well, if we can get one of those going, why can't you get 10 of those going? And I'm hoping that some of these ideas will spark some additional innovation within you all, staff, and the community as a whole, if they embrace it, where maybe something clever like that can come up. Just real quick, a couple of other quick ideas. We thought it would be good, and no other communities do this, establish a little bit of a competitiveness committee. And one thing I'd like to leave the effort with when we're done is working with staff to create a bit of a matrix of all the important things, the different categories that make you either very competitive or not as competitive with others. And you just put down the numbers, and then the next quarter, you update it, the next quarter, you update it. And you have this longer-term goal of, let's try to be competitive with our fees, let's be competitive with taxes, let's make sure we're investing enough in infrastructure. And so that's almost a to-do item as well, because you can start working on that this year. The outreach to the North Phoenix area to establish some kind of that pilot program, that can happen this year. And there's a number of other ideas that I won't go into now to save some time, but we have about a dozen of these that we're working on with staff. Just again, the to-do items are the way to get things done. I've seen so many strategic plans just get put on a bookshelf and they're not used. The intent of this is that executive summary, at least the executive summary, will be something that you'll keep on your desk for a couple of years, and you'll be discussing with staff for a long time. Uh-oh. Another item that we included in the analysis, which has been put in no other strategic plan that I've seen, is we tabulated a lot of the recommendations that would add to not just growth. The idea isn't just to rapidly grow the community, it's to grow well. It's to maintain that definition of who you are, but lift up opportunities. It's to create extra income. So the current businesses are stronger, but maybe some additional new businesses will be coming in with local amenities or base sector businesses. And so we created a, we basically did a complicated model for our recommendations. And the dark, the blue line in the middle is the baseline. That's just the current state forecast. And our concern is that communities have a choice of, and Governor Ducey brought this up earlier, you either forge ahead or you have a risk of decaying. If we forge ahead, you hit that orange line in terms of our estimates for the extra jobs that could be created. It also creates an estimate for some potential for population demand, which means you have some estimates for housing demand, which means it helps you with some of your planning on what kind of housing volume you're going to need. Actual statistics that match your plan that you'll have to figure out how to accommodate. If you're going to need, on the more optimistic one, you're going to need another 3,000 to 5,000 housing units, at least you'll know that that would be on the upper end of what you potentially can implement. And so when you monetize that over 20 years, that adds up, that extra growth from being aggressive, but not overly aggressive, being smart, added up to more than $44 million in extra tax collections. Now, why is that value important? Because to do some of the things that we're recommending and your staff are recommending and that you have also recommended in the past, it costs money. Infrastructure costs money, everything else does. Well, I've always said that you can't run government like a business, but you can bring in business principles into some of the ideas. So when I have, when we had to invest in new MacBooks because they were just getting slow with the updates, I didn't look at it as I had to spend a certain amount of money on new laptops for everybody in the office. It was, this is going to make them more productive, and I'm probably going to make a lot more money than I'm spending. Well, this is the same concept. It's when you look at your projects, it'll be, it may cost us $2 million for this one project, but it's necessary to develop that economic development activity that's going to generate $5 million within four years for you. but it's necessary to develop that economic development activity that's going to generate $5 million within four years for you. So that's a way of bringing in this monetizing and the ROI discussion into what you do. Now, we're only doing this on a broad basis, but we want to leave the model with your staff so that you have some chances to go through and on an individual project. You can say, what does the job growth have to be for this $3 million investment to pay off? We'll give you a spreadsheet where you do a couple of calculations. And then it'll be, we have to create this many jobs in order to generate the revenue to cover that cost. Do we think that's going to work? That's how you get stuff done. That's how you get specific. So there's going to be some very basic economic development principles and, you know, general comments on strategies. But it's the to-do list stuff that's really going to be the most valuable. And the ability to monetize this, even after we're gone, again, we already decided we want to leave our model with your crew so that they can run some analyses for you after the fact. And, and I do, to be aware, the report is about 90 pages long. But we always know that people don't like to read a 90-page report. I don't like to read a 90-page report. But the executive summary is going to get, I, if I, if I was in your position, I'd be very excited because it's a different report. Other, no other communities have this kind of a report. And it is a result of your staff telling us, think outside the box, be innovative, we want to work with you. And this is maybe the only time where the community outreach has so closely matched the economic opportunities, where we don't have to recommend a political component to the analysis, which is how do you do an education component with the public so that they understand these economic issues? They already did. So again, everything came together really well, and it was a pleasure working with everybody. And I think that's it for me. Any questions real quick before Cutter comes back up?
Questions or comments?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Great job.
Okay, thank you. Mayor and Council, so what I wanted to kind of finish up with is just touch on the tourism aspect of this report. As Jim said, yeah, the report he first sent me was about 90 pages, and I definitely didn't want to add that to the staff report and have you guys have an overwhelming report that you'd have to dig into. So the information that is in the nine page that was in the staff report, the executive summary, is very short and just kind of examples. So even when the, the outreach portion of that, I think there's three examples or topics on that. Then he had a very more, you know, detailed, probably three, four more pages just specifically on that subject. So it is way, way more detailed than, than just the nine-page report that you do have. But that's just to give you an idea of some of the details that'll be in that report and, you know, where we're going to kind of elaborate from. So within the tourism stuff, you know, we really, really dug in and, and looked at the economic profile of the broader region and, and noticed that definitely, I mean, we all know that, I think we had that discussion earlier about regional support, especially when it comes to tourism. We are larger, of course, as a region and as a county, you know. So we're kind of looking at this, not just in Prescott Valley, but the entire region, the countywide, and how we're going to really market our region and get more visitors here. You know, tourism dollars definitely bring, bring a different, a different aspect to the, to the community. And we get a lot bigger bang for our buck, if you will. So they stay in our hotels, we get that tax rate, they eat at the restaurants, they go fill up with gas. I mean, if they stay here for a day or two, I mean, it's really good for, for the town and, and the bottom line. So, so for the next slide. So town incentives, we've dug through, of course, we have a couple of the incentives that we had already established with you guys, and we are offering. So part of that too is, like Jim had said, he didn't just want to give us a report or, you know, be explaining things that we kind of already know. He wants to give us a to-do list. And some of that information towards the end of that executive summary will really drive this home for us. So what we want to look at too is town incentives. If it's something that we can help to encourage those higher wage job opportunities, then that's absolutely what we want to do. At the end of the day, we're looking at, of course, the attainable housing that we have and, and the issues there. So what we're trying to do is combat that with higher wage job opportunities. When we are looking at different tech and industries and trying to attract them to Prescott Valley, we want to be intentional with what is coming, and we're trying to encourage some of those higher wage jobs so people can afford to live here. That's, that's the main goal there, is, is not just to, you know, kind of stand by and just let them come or fall into place as they do. We really want to be intentional with who we're going after, who we're trying to attract, if that's the case. And, and we want them to be those higher wage jobs. So a couple of the previous slides that Jim had had showed some of those occupations and the money that they were basically making, their salaries, and, and they were good amounts. So that it wasn't just identifying the industries, but like Jim had said, it was identifying the occupations within those industries and trying to find, you know, those higher wage jobs so we can really attract industries that focus, you know, within those occupations. So like I said, that slide is really just a couple of ideas so we can expand on and really kind of dig into what the, the town itself, us as Economic Development Division, and, you know, the council, how we can really start to incentivize some of these specific businesses. We're not just going after, you know, kind of whatever will land here anymore. We want to be definitely intentional. So I believe that is all we have for you. So if you do have any questions, concerns, anything like that for us, we will gladly take them, and we will keep working on this report for you, so.
Actually, I have just one question for Mr. Rounds.
Yep.
Sir, you've, you've worked all across the state with different communities, different towns, different cities, worked in northern Arizona. What is just your, your perception of the potential of Prescott Valley? From a non-biased position, and what you see from your experience?
Management, staff, a council and a mayor that wants to see growth but is thoughtful about it. Wanting to have some of these innovative ideas on reaching out to a North Phoenix area for, to bring up some, bring some high tech in the area where other communities don't want anything to do with Maricopa County, even though some of those communities are right next to Yavapai. The, the location in the state will make it perfect for some manufacturing that doesn't even have to be utilized in the area. One thing that we're real big on in the state because of housing affordability is prefab housing, but not the stuff that makes everybody drive slowly on 17, where you have that big half a home. It's those companies that can do the individual wall units, and you stack them like this on a truck. An entire home can get put on a truck and shipped very, shipped very quickly elsewhere. Well, when you're centrally located, you can be doing some of these. So these are actually, there's some actual recommendations for businesses that I think could immediately come in here and thrive. You don't see that everywhere. There's a lot of available land. If, if we could get to the point where we had a strategic plan for the community that matched a strategic plan of landowners and other businesses, I think this place is going to really flourish. I've, I've already recommended to some people that are asking, what are going to be some good communities to invest in? Not just, you know, you know, what, where do you like? And I, I bring up this area. It's, you, you have too much going for you. But it doesn't seem like it all the time, because I feel like you're in that beginning of that upward curve. But you get to define how steep that curve is and how many high wage jobs are in there. But it's not just a high wage jobs. You create that high wage job, you create that middle level job for that other younger person that's starting a family and needs to go to school while they're working, and then they have opportunities to then advance elsewhere. So you have the, you have the college, there's, I could go on. There's probably 100 different reasons why I'm very, very optimistic. Most other reports, it, well, the reports are different than with the feedback that you give. Sometimes it's negative feedback, and that one get published, but that's where you pass it along to leaders in a community. I really don't have anything negative in this case. This has been, this has been positive. This has been a very fun project.
Would you tell us, Mr. Rounds, if there was negative?
If there was, would I tell you?
Yes, I would hope you would. I would hope you would.
If you, if you, if you've seen some other regional council meetings, you'll know that I tell it like it is. So yes, and I anticipate that we're probably going to be working in different capacities up here at different times, especially with my friend Andy. And so there'll be chances to brainstorm with your staff on additional items, maybe some state subsidies in different areas. One thing that I would love to see up here is an environmental technology center where we do some additional R and D and maybe even some manufacturing. And we get into some of those things that were referenced earlier at the, at Ducey's presentation, where the reason that I got into the environmental tech ideas, my friends were saying, well, why are you hugging trees? I said, I'm not wearing Birkenstocks and hugging trees. I'm talking about bringing the R and D and the manufacturing to Arizona, because all my friends are going to Israel to learn about some of these technologies. Why aren't they flying here? We have to start asking that. We have to stop asking, is the glass half-full or is it half-empty? We have to say, why isn't the glass full? So we have to be a little bit more aggressive with those things. And this, that's just the vibe I get here. Sometimes you can just tell from a vibe from dealing with mostly staff, because that's who you deal with the most, but also you all.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your work on this. Councilwoman?
I did have a real quick question. Are we prepared with the amount of industrial land that we have to offer for these companies that may want to come in the future?
Are you prepared? Yes and no. You have enough volume, but there'll be cases where businesses may need some additional infrastructure put in. But that's where you go back and you figure out what are they asking for. In some cases, you have a capital improvement plan where you might be putting in a road in five years. If they need it now, I don't even call that an incentive. I call that just time value of money. You're putting it in to get that business to locate here. We've done some analyses on industrial demand in Chino Valley, so at least, you know, somewhat nearby. But it came down to that ROI type of a thing. Can you afford to put in the amount of infrastructure? Because there's a cash flow issue in some cases. That'll then create five times that amount later. And again, everything that we've talked about with your staff, they love the idea of the ROI and doing some of the modeling going forward. So when you ask, again, you're being asked to spend $3 million, you'll be able to be told, we need this many jobs, do you believe it? I'm often asked on things that I can't calculate. They'll say, well, what's the impact of this big investment? I might not be able to calculate it, but I, I would say, how I approached it with a recent state lawmaker is I said, do you think that if you did this very bad thing, it could cost our state rate of growth to decline by just 1/10 of 1 percentage point? 2.7 to 2.6%? And they said, well, that's reasonable, that doesn't seem like that much. Okay, well, that just costs you several hundred million dollars over the next decade. And then you can go the other way with it too. So sometimes you don't know, but you can just use that gut feel. Because if you reduce things to the absurd, and you know you're at least going to match it, and you only need to hit that really low absurd level to make it pencil out, then you feel good about your recommendation and your vote, even though you don't know the exact number. So there's different ways that you can do it when things aren't completely known.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Davis?
If I could, just one moment. I want to recognize Cutter Chamberlain and Diana Soto. They are our brand new economic development team. And it is not an easy feat to start a department. And they have done a tremendous job in working in partnership with Mr. Rounds and Mr. Tobin. This is all exciting stuff. And as you've just seen a high-level preview of it, it's many moving parts and pieces. So as we've talked as a council about affordable housing, how, how that ties into it, working with our, you know, higher educational partners on workforce development, there's many, many different elements to this plan. And I, I just want to recognize a team that is really working to understand how all of it ties together, and then working across the organization on how to implement this. And ultimately, it's all about how do we make this a better community? Making sure that we can maintain the infrastructure for the community with good investments. If you think about a community, it takes money to be able to maintain the roads, the parks, and have public safety. And so all of this effort is not about necessarily today. What we are thinking about, what you guys are involved with, is looking out years into the future of how do we make sure we have a sustainable, great community for future generations? So thank you to the whole team.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rounds.
Thank you, everybody.
Next up, item 2B, wheelhouse license agreement update. Mr. Judy, leading us off.
Mayor and Council, in the fall of 2021, the town purchased approximately 37 acres from Yavapai County, which included an approximately 60,000 square foot plus building. We purchased it knowing that there was a potential operator that would be able to utilize the building on behalf of our, our youth and community. So we wanted to give the council an update on what's been going on over the past two years, and then take a peek into the future a little bit. With that, I would like to invite up Charlie Arnold, who will talk about all the improvements that have happened out there.
Thanks, sir. Welcome, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Ryan. I'm happy to be here to provide an update about the wheelhouse. Going back to December of 2021, where we started was a 60,000 square foot horse barn that hadn't been used more than a few times in nearly 10 years. And where we are today is dramatically different. In the last 12 months, we have seen 62,506 users come through the facility. That's both through our main door, through the dance studio, through the RC track, and the BMX track out back. We've expanded our board of advisors to add more community members. We've established a wheelhouse users group, or the WUG group, to be able to open up our lines of communication with the different folks that are utilizing the facility. We've completed the multipurpose turf area outside. And for those of you that are athletically involved in the community, you might recognize that as some of the surplus mountain valley park turf that we purchased through the auction process. We completed the RC racetrack. BMX is now fully up and running and has doubled its footprint since its initial opening. We've also completed our volleyball expansion. While you all were managing and expanding the Boys and Girls Club, we hosted the town's volleyball leagues until that facility was up and running. And we were able to do that with the three courts that we have in the building. Additionally, we have hosted an international roller derby bout. We had teams from Mexico, Canada, and throughout the Western United States that were here for three days. We've hosted hockey state finals twice. And just to give you an idea, we were talking about tourism a moment ago. That's roughly 1,100 to 1,200 people who are here for two to three days in the community participating in that tournament. We've added a basketball program. We've partnered with Yavapai College. We are now the implement weather training facility for their outdoor sports. So if there's lightning in the air, the soccer team is able to immediately move over and utilize the facility. We've added Olympic judo in addition to our Olympic boxing program. This weekend, the Arizona Coyotes are hosting their first Northern Arizona youth training camp for the kids in the community, which is really exciting, and I can't wait to see that. We also, after a lot of work, partnered with Humboldt Unified School District, and we have now our first middle school hockey team. We will be adding additional schools next school year, and we are working on adding additional teams. One of the things we provide is transportation. We have a partnership with a local company that donated a bus. And so the kids are able to be picked up from the school, brought to the facility, and participate in their program. And we're pretty excited about that. Coming up in May, we'll be hosting our first state BMX race. To give you an idea, we're expecting 1,200 participants and spectators over the span of that weekend. To land a state-level race, it's taken two years of work and effort to get there. But we finally have the track where we need it, and it's pretty exciting stuff. This will be a big event. Some of those completed projects, just some visuals for you to see. The BMX track, the multipurpose turf area, and then an aerial of the RC track. And what you see around it are all of the folks who came out to the inaugural race. We had 90 racers, plus all the spectators and family members that participated. And we already have three of those on the calendar for this summer. Community, it's important. We're here for the kids. That is our mission. And some of the things that we have been doing in the community, we hosted a blood drive with the Caston family. We have now started the public skating nights in conjunction with P-Town Skate Club. And so coming up, actually in two weeks, we will be hosting another public skating session at the wheelhouse. They have sold out every night within 35 minutes. And so this time, we're adding two sessions to accommodate. And in talking with them, these are the largest turnouts they've ever had in the years they've been doing this. They used to do it in Prescott. And their comment to me is Prescott Valley is showing up. Prescott Valley is coming out and participating and taking part. I added Prescott Valley Little League here. Last year, you'll remember, the winter was terrible, and the town fields were closed. We hosted Prescott Valley Little League tryouts in the building. They were able to start their season on time and not have to delay anything. And it's one of the nice things about the flexibility that our facility has. We can do a lot with a lot of different groups. Upcoming events, we've got the youth camp that I mentioned, the BMX state race.
Let me interrupt you for one moment. Can you go back one slide?
Yes.
What is the, the picture in the right-hand corner? It looks like they're having...
Yes, the Sonoran Championship Wrestling or the one above it?
The one above it.
So that was a... So that was a local community group that hosted a fundraiser dinner on our multipurpose floor. And they had roughly 150 people that came to that, and they brought in outside catering. Right below it is the semi-professional Sonoran Championship Wrestling Program. This will be their third show, and this is being done in conjunction with the BMX weekend. So it's an activity that's going to keep people in town, wanting to stay at the hotels and be part of the things that we're doing outside of the bike race. It's pretty entertaining, to say the least. You might want to check it out. We also have, again, state hockey tournament coming up. We've got the state series races. We've got another roller derby tournament on the schedule, and we're adding more public skating. In addition to that, the dance studio is going to be running their summer camp programs, and they just recently put that out. But wanted to give you some really interesting photos of some of the hockey kids and activities. Top right picture, first Prescott Valley hockey team to win a state championship. And that was in the 12 and under division. And that was in last season. They're now playing again, and will be chasing that state championship one more time. Safety and security was a big thing we talked about with you all as we started this. Current measures, you know, we have a very robust background check program. We do annual coach and volunteer training. We have a pretty substantial security camera system, digital invoicing and payment systems to help control the flow of dollars. We've added security fencing. We implemented a grant from the Arizona Community Foundation for new helmets for multiple sports, including BMX and hockey. There was also a grant that helped with the football program getting upgraded helmets. You might not know this, but helmets expire. There's actually a date on the back, and they have to be replaced. We have expanded our concussion training. We are a canine training facility for the Prescott Valley Police Department. So when you walk up to the building, there's a nice sign that gives you a little warning there. We really want the kids and the police to have a positive relationship, and we found that so far. It's been great. We've done extensive safety light upgrades on the interior. So now, if the power goes out, you can find your way around the building. But that required over 25 new lights to be installed just for that. And we've also implemented emergency contact program. Not every participant is signed up through a direct program. And sometimes kids will be like, I don't have my cell phone, or I don't know my parents' phone number. We have a database. We can look it up and help get them in touch with their parents. Because we get a lot of kids that get dropped off at the door, and parents don't come back for a little bit. Upcoming improvements, we applied for a safety grant this year from the Arizona Community Foundation, which we're hoping to hear back in the next two weeks about. We're going to be doing additional cameras, fencing, more lighting on the east and south side of the building. We're also doing some additional hardening measures for the building, and more training. Major building projects. So again, this was a 60,000 square foot horse barn when we started. We have replaced all of the exterior sidewalks and the main entry with concrete. We've upgraded the interior lights to LED, which is equated to a 60% plus savings on our electric bill for the whole facility. When this building was taken over, the discussion from the county was it's about three grand a month in power. Our average bill right now is 1475. Not bad. And we're using it more than they were, way more. We chip sealed the main entry road. We reestablished the drainage channels on the south of the property, which was carrying all of the water from the horse track into regional drainage. We also brought all the exterior lights into dark sky compliance. We serviced and repaired the heating and cooling units, which there are six heaters, and there are six swamp coolers, and they all were inoperable, needed to be completely rebuilt. We've done that. We took out all of the arena dirt and replaced it with eight inches of ABC. So in the event that we want to put concrete in, or someday a future user does, that is in place and would not have to be done. We've repaired and installed fencing throughout the site. We've installed landscaping, including trees along our western boundary, shrubs, planters, and a drip system. You might remember, Yavapai County was really concerned about the fire suppression system. It was a big item for them. We have serviced and upgraded that system, and it has been recertified every year since we've been in there. We've, again, installed the emergency and exit lighting, replaced one of the pressure reducing valves, which feeds the building with water. That was a pretty substantial project. We also significantly repaired the roof and skylights. Over 20,000 of the screws in the roof that have rubber grommets were replaced by our crews. We've upgraded and expanded the electrical systems. We've created an accurate building footprint and floor plan, as well as topo of the property. That did not exist previously. And one of the things I'm really excited about, this took over a year of working with Sparklight, but there is now fiber optics to the building, and also now available in that whole northern region of the property for the town's properties. Our big project that is coming up this spring and summer is going to be paving the parking lot and redoing the entry road. It's about a $318,000 project. But that in itself, that project right there, not only adds value to the building, it makes it better for the users, but it's probably the biggest thing next to making the building usable that we will accomplish on your behalf. And getting that paving done is going to be tremendous. We have secured the lion's share of the funding for that project, and are working right now with the engineers and contractors to submit our permit application for that. Challenges. There's no doubt there's challenges out there every day. We are definitely seeing the impact of the current economy on families and individuals. People are having to tighten their belts and become more cautious with their spending. We're seeing the impact on the business community as well, who we have seen a lot of belt tightening there. Costs of materials and labor continue to be high. Sometimes we get lucky and things go down, but we have not seen the labor market improve greatly as far as the costs to us if we're hiring out for a project or a program. Operational costs are increasing. Unfortunately, APS has continued to increase power costs. So while we've had savings, some of that gets eaten up in the rate increases. Plus, we've also seen insurance prices really start to go up. And we are heavily dependent on volunteers. And as an organization, that can be challenging at times, because volunteers don't always have that same priority that an employee might have. But needless to say, with challenges, there's a lot of opportunities. We have seen a growing demand for more local youth opportunities. And that is why, when you come to the building now, not only is it hockey and indoor soccer, it's volleyball, it's boxing, it's wrestling, it's cheer, it's dance, it's judo, it's BMX, it's RC racing, it is agility training. We host baseball teams, softball teams, football teams doing their practices indoors with us. It just goes and goes and goes. We've identified the need for these programs, and we've made our space more adaptive for that. We are going to grow our daytime programs to be more beneficial to the community, and a big chunk of that will be in the adult sector during the day. We also are expanding our engagement within the town. As it relates to community events and activities, we want to remain as adaptive as possible. It's an ever-changing landscape out there, especially with youth and what they're interested in. And now that we have fiber, we're going to be able to implement our gaming program that we've had a lot of requests for. And we will be expanding our efforts with the school district. There's a lot of opportunity to engage our local kids. And then, in addition to that, working with the town's Parks and Rec Department, and finding additional opportunities within the property. Just some of the action that happens out there on a daily basis, serving the kids in our communities. A little bit more of some of the stuff. There's some of the public skating in the bottom left. Every time, more lasers, more lights get added, and it makes it just a little bit more fun. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Judy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just a couple more items as we wrap up here. There's been some additional activity from the town side of things on our property out there. Our Parks and Recreation Department has wanted for years to host an archery program, and so they've done some preliminary earthwork out there on the northeast corner. You can see highlighted there. They hope to get that program going over the next year. Our own Prescott Valley Police Department also is looking for a canine training facility. They've received some grants, and they're looking to create a facility and obstacle course for our canine friends out there. And they're looking at that parcel on the bottom left that you see in that graphic. And they are ready to go on that. I just got an email this morning from our facilities department questioning the status and if we were okay to move forward. We're looking to potentially bring the license back to the council in the future. We have some history with the building now, over the past couple of years. Our original license payments may have been a little aggressive, so we're looking to roll that back a little bit to 96,000 per year. We believe that'll be a sustainable level for them, where they're not having to try to scrape to make their operations as successful. We would allow them to keep naming rights and tournament fees that they collect. We would extend the term from three to five years. And additionally, we would allow them to offset physical improvements, permanent improvements that they make to the facility towards their license payments. We do have precedent with that with another town facility, which I'll talk about in the next slide. And these are some of the other town buildings that we have that we license or lease to other entities. The Old Town Hall, which is off of Bob Drive, we leased that. I always confuse license and lease. Ivan gets mad at me. But we leased that one, I believe, to prevent child abuse. They work hand in hand with our police department to investigate child abuse. They offer rooms where they can interview kids that have been abused, and then there are multiple people watching, so the kids don't have to be interviewed over and over again. It's all done on one site. So we have leased that site to them. They've added a building. Their rent was originally about 2,000 per month, 24,000 per year. Again, we allow them to offset that with physical improvements that they have done to the property, which ultimately will become property of the town. So they're not currently paying us anything. They've put up a very, very nice building that probably costs, you know, well over a couple million dollars for the size of the building that it is. The Boys and Girls Club, we charge them a buck a year. We split utilities. The cost of senior center, not to forget about our seniors. We also rent that to them for a dollar a year, and we actually pay them $40,000 a year to operate a senior program on behalf of the town. The town also has a small building off of Tanny Drive that used to host our community development department. We lease that out to NACOG for a dollar a year, and they are responsible for utilities. So those are some of the other comparisons that we have. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Judy, can you just go back to your previous slide? I think it's clear by just looking at the list of different buildings that we have and the amounts of rent that we charge. Each one of these that we see on the screen, they provide a different type of service to a different demographic throughout our town. And the wheelhouse is no different when it comes to this. And they are also providing a service. And it's just our way of basically partnering with a different organization to be able to provide some sort of service for our residents. We can be here for several hours talking about the benefits of CASA, or the Boys and Girls Club, or Head Start, as well as the wheelhouse. So this just kind of brings it all together. And I don't want, like you said, early on, the numbers that we were projecting, we didn't really know the numbers and what that was really looking like. And now that we have a baseline, I think it benefits not only the wheelhouse, but it benefits the entire community. I think, whatever the number was, the door count was 60, over 60,000. Is that the number, Mr. Arnold, of individuals coming and going and utilizing the facility? So I think this is something that we just needed to do, and it's a benefit for all. Thank you.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So that same slide you have up, it's kind of standard operating procedure for jurisdiction to lease town or city-owned property for a dollar in order to get a value back. And like the mayor said, these are all values to us and to our residents. So I don't see a problem with reducing the rental payment. And Mr. Arnold, thank you for being here today, and thank you for what you've done in RPV. I substitute in the classroom, and I hear about the wheelhouse all the time with big smiles on their face. So thanks to you for that and your vision. And, you know, we've talked, I talked about early on when I voted to approve this project, that it is a huge protective factor for our kids. Not only those that enjoy team sports, but those that enjoy individual sports. You have something for everybody. And that's really important. And I think I can go as far as saying it saves lives, what you're doing out there. So thank you. I'm really, really, really excited about the middle school Bradshaw Mountain Middle Hockey.
Absolutely.
So I've been wanting to get out there for one of their games, and I need to do that. So I haven't been out there in a long time, and I would love a tour. So if you can reach out to me, or I'll reach out to you, I would love to walk through, because you've done a lot out there. And is there any way we can start getting your calendar of events emailed to us?
Absolutely.
So that if we can attend something, we can be there. And then my last question is, since you have a lot of attendance there and a lot of mouths to feed, is there a way for them to eat? Do you have food trucks? What are you doing?
Yep. So we have, Vice Mayor, thank you, a lot of ground, right? There are so many different aspects to the wheelhouse. And so we do have a small concession area. We are working diligently to expand that, to be able to provide services when we have regular events as well as bigger events. But today, you would find bottled drinks, chips, candy, stuff like that. We've got our license through the county. We have an amazing taco plate when we have larger events. I think this weekend, they're going to have pulled pork sandwiches. So we do offer that. One of the things I still am super proud of is not a single kid that we have run through our drug testing program has ever failed.
Yay. I remember you talking about that.
Yep. And as we are looking at some of our high school age programs, we're looking at how to further implement those opportunities. And with the middle school, it's been an amazing transformation from the day that half the team couldn't stand up on skates to watching them playing games, and the excitement that's starting to come within the school district. And I think within two or three years, you're going to see a Quad City Middle School Hockey League being, happening here in Prescott Valley with teams from different school districts. And we're very excited about that.
And who knows, we might have some Olympians coming out of the wheelhouse someday.
That's right. You know, we actually have four professional athletes that train in the wheelhouse. And what we do with them is we sponsor them in exchange for them working with the kids. So one is Danny Hilton. He's a professional boxer, and actually won a major bout here at the Finley Center. He comes in and trains the younger generation as part of the tradeoff for us sponsoring him. And you'd be amazed at the talent that's out here. Mike Miranda, former professional BMX racer, he's in the Hall of Fame. He lives in Pronghorn. He's on our track committee. It's tremendous, the assets that are here. And we're so excited to be here.
And small thing, we had talked early on about Matforce and a partnership with Matforce.
Yes.
And so they have so many programs out there. They have a parenting program. I mean, if we could get some parenting programs out there, all you'd need to do is provide space, you know, make sure that all of your staff and all your volunteers are trained in Narcan.
Yes.
We need to hook that up now that you've hit the ground running. And I would love to talk to you more about that.
Sounds great. And we're actually implementing a community room within our space that'll be available to groups that want to come in and have a meeting and do those types of things. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing. You know, when I was appointed in 2019, I kept hearing, there's nothing for our kids to do here. And little by little, thanks to you and others in the area, we have things for our kids to do. We have those protective factors. So thank you very much.
It's a 12-minute drive to 60,000 square feet of fun and stuff to do, which I love. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schumacher.
I just had one other comment, too, the other day at the Matforce, the fentanyl work group. They did say that the younger generations, the fentanyl overdoses are way down. So that's like a huge accomplishment with Matforce. But it's also because the kids do have something to do, and they're around the right people.
Yep.
So thank you for all the mentorship, for instructing the kids, for the kids having the right kind of people to hang out with. So we just really appreciate that and all your hard work. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And it's a community effort. And working with your staff has been tremendous in helping to make this vision a reality, and something that is doing something for the kids in the community. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Arms, or Mr. Judy?
If I could just add one more thing, clarify as well. We're not proposing to give that to them for a dollar a year. They would still be giving the town 96,000 per year, which will help offset our costs to the, for acquiring the building, again, offset by any permanent improvements that add value to the building. So, yeah. Any further questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, not about this. I, we, at 5 o'clock, the Arizona Corporation Commission is holding a hearing in here, and they may need to do some initial setup. I don't know exactly what's all involved, but I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that, that at 5, that there's a whole separate hearing taking place in here.
Hopefully, Mr. Wadsworth heard that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Okay, so we're going to present a lot of information. You'll see some stuff on your screen. We may not talk about all of it. We may not talk about all of it. We're going to give you a broad overview, which is the intent to begin with. And if you have any questions at the end, we'll go into that. With me tonight is Mr. Joseph Chang from the Phoenix Office of Jacobs Engineering. And he will be presenting the technical information. I'm going to give you a couple of brief slides here. This is what we're going to talk about, mainly PFAS, where we are, what we've been doing, where we're going next. And that's my introduction, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Chang.
Nailed it, Mr. Wadsworth.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for having me. I'm excited to talk about this PFAS issue that we've been trying to address. So first here, we have properties and uses of PFAS. It's basically, some people call it the everywhere chemical because it's seen everywhere, and some people also call it the forever chemical because it's very persistent in the environment. And we'll now talk about what the EPA plans to do under the Safe Drinking Water Act. The EPA plans to have these MCLs, we call them maximum contaminant levels, which are the standard levels when water enters a distribution system. These are kind of safe-to-drink levels. We can think of it that way. And they've established them for six PFAS compounds. The first two are PFOA and PFOS. These levels are established at four nanograms per liter, nanograms per liter meaning parts per trillion, or one part of PFAS compound to 1 trillion parts of water molecules. So very, very small levels, but the EPA has deemed these are the levels that are safe for drinking consumption. The EPA also has established what they call a hazard index for the other four PFAS compounds they plan to regulate. And the calculation is shown here, but generally, the hazard index is not as a driver in these kind of projects. Usually, the PFOA and PFOS MCLs are the drivers. In terms of when we expect the publication of this final rule, we expect it to come in April 15, 2024, according to our sources in Washington. And from then, it'll have three years before compliance will be enforced. And state by state, there may be a two-year extension after that. Now let's talk about Prescott Valley's PFAS water quality data. So here, we have a bunch of wells, Lake Valley, Little Pete, and Quail Woods 2, 3, and 4, along with their PFAS concentrations. So anything in red you see, that's over the MCL or the maximum contaminant level, the limit set by the EPA. So anything over four nanograms per liter for PFOA and PFOS, that's highlighted in the red. And then anything highlighted in the yellow is anything that's kind of close to the MCL or approaching. And those are more levels we want to monitor to see if they continue, if they increase and if they increase over the MCL in the future. So that was for drinking water. This is now for reclaimed water or the wastewater treatment plant effluent. So here, PFOA, there is a level here of 9.1, which is over that MCL of four. Now, direction of design efforts. So in discussions with Neil and other folks at the town, we decided to start implementing treatment at, considering implementing treatment at Little Pete because it's a very large producer well as a flow rate of 2,000 gallons per minute. And we also want to, we also want to implement treatment at Quail Woods 2, 3, and 4 because even though they are lower-producing wells, around 150 to 250 gallons per minute wells, because the Quailwood area is a little bit isolated from the rest of the distribution system, those wells in that area are very important to that community. And so we're thinking, we want to implement treatment there. And also, there's a new reclaimed water injection well planned. So this whole aquifer, the groundwater is all connected. So even, let's say you inject this reclaimed water into the aquifer, but then that reclaimed water has PFAS. Then eventually, when you pump that water up for drinking water, you're going to get that PFAS in your drinking water. So we want to treat the reclaimed water before it enters the aquifer. So that's the project at the new reclaimed water injection well. Now, the status of design for Quail Woods 2, 3, and 4. We've completed alternative analysis and conceptual design, and now we're currently scoping detailed design or final design. We expect to start detailed design in either late of this month or beginning of next month. For Little Pete, the concentrations, if you remember, are kind of low compared to the MCL. There, it's three nanograms per liter, whereas the limit is four nanograms per liter. And so we want to continue sampling and monitoring. And as long as the limit does not exceed that MCL, then it's safe there for Little Pete. Reclaimed water injection well, then alternative analysis has been complete, and now we're moving into bench scale testing because unlike for drinking water, PFAS treatment for reclaimed water or wastewater effluent is a little more up in the air. More research is still being done. Prescott Valley is actually on the forefront of that research by trying to implement treatment for a reclaimed water site. So this is the technology that we're going to be implementing at Quail Woods 2, 3, and 4. It's called ion exchange. That's kind of what it looks like, the resin or the ion exchange beads, little tiny yellow beads, kind of like sand. And they, a bunch of those beads are put into these gigantic, we call them pressure vessels, which are just giant cylinders. The ones in this picture here are outdoor and they're 12-foot diameter vessels. The one will be, the ones will be installing at Quail Woods 2, 3, and 4. There'll be four or five-foot diameter vessels, so they'll be much smaller. This is kind of an outline of what the skids will look like. So on the left, we have a plan view. On the right, we have a section view. And that little piece in the middle, it's, we call it a valve tree, but it's a series of valves. And how it works is, we call these lead-lag trains. One of the vessels is a lead vessel, the other vessel is a lag vessel. So how this works is the water goes into one lead vessel, gets filtered by those ion-exchange resin beads, and then it goes through the valve tree, goes through the valves, and then goes through into the lag vessel that comes later. The importance of the valves is you can switch the valve configuration so that you can switch the lead and the lag vessels because usually, the lead vessel will be, we call it exhausted first or will be used up first, and then the lag vessel will become the lead vessel. And then the original lead vessel will replace the media, and then it'll have fresh new media, and then that will become the new lag vessel. So that's the importance of the valve tree in the middle there. These are the site layouts for Quail Woods 2, 3, and 4. With, we have these giant pressure vessels, pressure vessels, along with some pretreatments, some bag filters, and that will be in those rectangles there on each of these Quailwood sites. The Quailwood 3-1 is slightly larger because it's a slightly larger flow than Quailwoods 2 and 4. And the status for Little Pete. So the graph on the right here, that MCL of four is shown in that red dotted line. And in the blue, that shows the concentrations at Little Pete over time from 2022 to 2024. So you can see, it's, it was kind of increasing a little bit from 1.8 all the way up to 3, but then it started decreasing. And so, and given this levels of nanograms per liter, this is well within the analytical variance from sample to sample. One could be 2, one could be 3. So this is very normal that we see this kind of variation. So as long as we're below 4, that Little Pete well will be okay. Some alternatives that we have looked into with the town are maybe pursuing a rental because we don't know if this level will ever exceed the MCL, but let's say it does and we're in an emergency situation, we can get a rental onsite and immediately start treating at that site to, so that the level goes below the MCL. But then if we do go with a permanent installation, then it will be the same technology as we talked about for the Quailwood sites, those ion exchange lead-lag pressure vessels. From the reclaimed water injection well, we are now pursuing what we call bench scale testing or kind of a bench top on top of a desk style testing because these are very new technologies. Florasorb is a new kind of absorbent. Foam fractionation is also a new technology for surfactant removal. So we'll be pursuing bench scale testing. We've already shipped out the water to these laboratories, and these laboratories are conducting these tests on your wastewater effluent. And so we'll see from the outcome of those tests which technology is better at treating your particular wastewater because every wastewater is different. And based on that, we'll be now, then going into design of a full-scale system, whether it be the Florasorb, which is shown in that top middle picture, or the Foam fractionation, which is shown in that top right picture. Cost opinions. So we've developed, since we've already done a conceptual design of the Quailwood sites, we've developed some preliminary cost opinions for each of these sites. So each of them will be around $2 million for capital costs of all the equipment and construction, $2 million each. And then we also calculated out around $100,000 for O&amp;N, that's operation and maintenance costs annually. And we also calculated 20-year net present value, the capital and operation and maintenance of around, ranging from 4 to 6 million. It's a bit up in the air because these media, as the EPA rolls out this new regulation, these media, these treatment systems will be very high in demand. And so we expect inflation to be higher for these kinds of systems and this kind of technology. So it's a little bit uncertain how much that media, that treatment technology will, the cost will increase over time. Next steps. So as I mentioned, we're going into detailed design or final design for the, all three Quailwood sites. We've been coordinating with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality since they are in charge of permitting the approval to construct, approval to construct and approval of construction for these sites. We expect to be completing design through Q2 and Q3 of this year. And depending on some variation with ADQ requirements, may go a little bit further along than that. And we'll also be doing some treatability testing or bench scale testing for the, these Quailwood sites as well to make sure that we're getting, we're optimizing the operation and maintenance costs. Little Pete will continue to monitor these sites because that's the one that's below the MCL. We'll continue to monitor it, monitor it. And then the reclaimed water injection well, the bench scale testing, we shipped out the water and it's now starting. And then after that is complete, we'll go into design for that reclaimed water injection well. And then now I'll hand it back over to Neil for the funding piece.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, so we're going to look at different types of funding, grants, WIFA loans, private equity loans, and then whatever we have to pay out of pocket. Don't know if you have any questions about that, but we're looking at whatever, different options that we can. And that brings us to the end of our presentation for you tonight.
Mr. Wadsworth, just got a few things. Not going to sit here and say that I tracked everything that this gentleman said to us today.
Good, because I don't want you to take my job.
But I do know that I'm confident that he knows what he's talking about, and he has a plan, which I appreciate that, sir. Will some of the, any funding that we get or any monies we get from the class action lawsuit go towards this, Mr.?
Indeed, they will, yes.
That will help offset the costs?
Yes. We were hoping we might be able to file claims in May, but the litigation, going the way litigation goes, you've got a $10 million settlement, you've got a $1 million settlement, and we're part of this nationwide effort, but there are people that are appealing it. So it has been slowed down a bit. But we do look forward to getting a payout, and we're grateful for the folks that work with us on that.
And Mr. Wadsworth, two things. One being the timing of this, like what does the timeline look like in regards to when these go online?
So design's going to continue for at least the next four to six months minimum. Well, at least that's what we're hoping for, but there are some unknowns with ADQ. Because the PFAS treatment on drinking water, there were no standards for that. It looks like they're going to be requiring some additional longer-term testing of efflu, of our water, which they wouldn't normally do for other types of treatment. So we've got to see how that plays out. We're hoping to start construction later this year, but it may be early next year. We're just going to have to see. So we, we could come back to you later on with an update, you know, in another four months and let you know where we're at. At this point, things are still up near.
And for those of us in the cheap seats, this will solve the problem. Once this goes online, there's no time lag or anything. This fixes it day one. You flip the switch?
Yes.
All I need to know. Thank you.
Yes. The only thing that will vary is how often we have to change that material out that's in those, in those vessels.
And we just won't know that yet.
Won't know that until we actually do more testing or until they're actually online and we experience it.
Right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So, sir, thank you for being here, and thank you for bringing it down to our level as much as you could. This PFAS, PFOS is happening everywhere for the most part, right?
Yes, yes, all over the country. Yes.
And you being Jacobs in multiple states, you guys are helping other jurisdictions with this.
Correct, yes.
And would you say we're moving at a quick pace compared to others? Or how do we fit? Because I mean, we have, we've been kind of criticized for not doing something sooner, and I know we've been doing it, but how would you rank us?
So it varies state by state. Some states, like California, have already had PFAS regulations even before the EPA had said anything about it, maybe five, six years ago. Arizona, as a state with regard to drinking water regulations, we always follow the EPA. And so because of that, we haven't been, I guess, as quote-unquote proactive as some of these other states that have established their own state MCLs or state limits. But as far as Arizona concerned, Arizona's concerned, I would say Prescott Valley is very on the forefront compared to other utilities. And that's because the rule hasn't even come out yet. A lot of people have been even debating over whether the actual rule will be for or not that level because that was in a draft, that was in a draft proposal that the EPA released last year. And so we don't even know if that's going to be the final number. So some people are just waiting until that final number comes out. So I would say Prescott Valley definitely on the forefront.
And we're not waiting because I know Neil, thank you, and Jacobs, and Ivan, and Gilbert, you guys have been working on this for a long time, and thank you. This is really good news. What's the timing on the injection well, would you say?
That's going to be a lot more speculative. Wastewater treatment for PFAS is not common, and so we have to do these treatability studies in a laboratory. We're then going to probably have to do a pilot test like at our treatment plant where we have full-size or half-size equipment, and we're actually running our effluent through it to see how it actually reacts. So, you know, this is going to be maybe a year or even two years longer than what we're looking for at the drinking water.
Boss.
Anything else for Mr. Wadsworth? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, thanks for coming out.